So are you hosting Turkey Day, Turkey now in your new house?
No.
What?
Nope, going down to Brownton, then going to Lakeville.
I'll be tell them, bro.
Yeah.
They tell her Brownton.
Yeah, but Lakeville is quite a ways away from that one.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be fun.
And, and all the snow that's coming that you're wishing, so, okay.
Why do you think I wish that it comes?
So that you don't have to go.
I don't have to go anywhere then.
All right, it's 3:30, we can go ahead and get the city council workshop going on November 25th. And we'll just let Wendy go ahead. Oh, roll call, go to roll call.
Sherri Moana.
Ben Keel.
Michelle Otto.
Lloyd Johnson.
Wayne McCormick.
Deb Felter.
Wendy Manson.
Okay, so this is our annual budget meeting for our final budget and levy. Um, the one we do in September is just a preliminary one, and it only includes like the general funds or, this one now includes also the enterprise funds. So I, um, you should have the pages with all the revenue. In the beginning, I think it's from two through nine. And then our expenditures goes from 10 to, that's a bigger one. 10 to 29, so I don't know if anybody had a chance to look at it, if there's any questions. Um, I can point out a couple of things, we, um, we realigned a little bit of payroll because we had some of our payroll, more than we probably should have going into the stormwater fund. A few years back, Sean had to switch some over into the stormwater fund and, stormwater fund doesn't get that much income, it's only, what is it, $4.50 per month, per household, so, it doesn't, I mean, it's only gets in like seventy some thousand a year, so we, we took some of it back out, Wayne and Deb and I decided that we would take, some of the payroll back out of there and switch it back over to the water and sewer where it was originally. So that's why you'll see the water and sewers a little bit higher than other years because we, and the stormwater's lower because we switched it around. Um, I think a couple of things in the wastewater, we budgeted this year for $50,000, did we Wayne, for sludge? Whereas we used to, we're only doing 30.
Yeah, and there's some on the inlet, correct?
Yeah, and there was some in there from previous years, but we upped that to $50,000. Um, other than that, I don't think there was really any big major differences from other years. I did the, on page 30 is a comparison and budget.
Back on the trade report there, on the employees' wages, did we include the influx of wages on Deb there?
Yep.
That's in there?
Yep.
Is that under line, the first line there?
On, you're on the expenditure thing here?
Yeah.
Under treasure, so that includes some of Deb's, some of mine, some of Heidi's. So they're all split up, so like mine wage itself goes to treasure, it goes to, a little bit to the parks, um, some to the community center, water, sewer, garbage, because I do all of the const payable, all the payroll. So that's how mine is all spread out, Deb's is spread out like between there, planning and zoning, some to water and sewer, because we all deal in the enterprise funds too, not just, you know, the guys that work in it, but we all have, something, like Jess's wages go entirely to the enterprise funds because she does utility billing. So hers is all in the, you know, in the enterprise funds. So, um, yes, so, so that is included in there, um, Deb's and then Heidi going more hours is all included in there. And I take into account the 2% and the 2% coli increases and the 2% increases in the pay for like the guys and everybody's.
And it's quite a jump from one year to the next, you know, $31,000 to $55,000.
Yeah. Well, the 31 is where we're at right now as of September, the budget was $45,000, it went from 45 to 55, so it's only $10,000 difference.
Oh, okay.
Stormwater, or not stormwater, sewer fund. I don't know if you've noticed, last year compared to this year's, last year's expenditures were $367,000 was the budget, this year it's only $214, or $215. That's because our bonds are paid off in the sewer fund. So we can start building that up a little bit because, um, if we do in 2021, when we do the reconstruction of downtown, a big chunk of water and sewer will be needed to help pay for that. Because we're going to replace all the water and sewer that's laying there, most of them have been there since the 40s and 50s or 60s, 30s or whenever they put water in.
Quite a lot though.
Yeah. I don't know if anybody has any questions?
I'm under the elections portion of it.
Yep.
We budgeted, we budgeted in 2018, but didn't we do elections in 2019? The, so the levy and all that doesn't, isn't a part of?
That's cool.
Also, so, yeah, sure, okay.
So we only have every other year?
Okay.
But I did budget quite a bit more because we have three elections.
Three elections next year, okay. What is the civil fines and penalties that we had in 2018?
Is it under revenue?
Uh, yes, page two. 920, 18 and then nothing, what is that?
I would have to go back and look, I'm not positive, yes. Hmm, I'd have to go back and look, I'm not positive what we had in there.
What is it, I mean?
We had it set up because way back when we still had Chris, and Chris was doing, um, what her and Heidi are doing now, we used to have the hundred dollar fine. And anything that if they didn't pay it, if they didn't rectify it or pay it, then it increased by a certain percentage every, so often like every so many days, 30 days or something, I don't even know what, remember what it was, but, that's why we had it set up because we used to collect fines, or penalties, or whatever you want to call them. But I, I'm not sure what we would have put in there in 2018, like I said, I'd have to go back and look.
Okay. And under the wastewater plant?
Mm-hmm.
Page nine. Can you just explain the Waverly and the 12 High cost?
Yep.
Just because so many people ask about that.
So Waverly capital cost and 12 High capital cost, that is not their usage. That is only the capital cost for when we built the sewer line coming across, the main, the main that comes from Waverly, and then 12 High connected into the main.
Yep.
So we built it and we charged them back from the day that we put it in until our bond is done. Every month they pay a set amount, so it's just like paying a loan, so they're making their loan payment back to us. So every year it's the same because they, they pay the same amount for the number of years till our bond is paid off. So their actual sales, although their usage is included in the wastewater plant sales. So that's collected and, um, put into the sales just like yours is and his is and.
Okay.
What, uh, when they put that in, how did they decipher who was going to pay what?
So they paid, um, from their lift station, I think they paid to where we connect, to where our property connects into it at the lift station maybe out there, so from their lift to their lift, I believe.
That's what they paid for?
Yeah, so it's the line that they ran that we don't use, so whatever line they have that we don't use, that's what they paid for.
Why do we have such a, oh, I suppose, the planners fees?
Because when Dale was here, he was, he, when we did budget, he said, you don't need to budget so high because I know, I have a planning degree and I'm a city planner. So we, we dropped the planning way down, but, um, after Dale left, we went back to NAC. So that is, the $25,000 is what we used to budget for years, we always budgeted that much.
Okay. And then under the streetscape, we have a $5,000 budget.
Where are you looking?
Uh, page 18, metro streetscape, which is now running. So that's what it is now, whereas I went to walk the development.
Oh, yeah, we didn't change it from other years because we didn't know what the streetscape was going to be doing, so we left it.
What do they typically use that? Because it's banners I see as separate.
That used to be where they did the, um,
The planting?
Yep.
Okay.
Does that include the planters then, the seasonal planters? Uh, no.
Can we just take that out of our general fund?
Yeah, and I don't know what's going to happen there because I scattered the meeting for December 4th and asked for everybody to RSVP and I have not heard from anybody.
Okay.
So.
Well, who took care of them this time because they really look nice.
The planters? Well, we, I always order the stuff in and then Sylvia and Roy I think planted them or put the stuff in there.
Because Paula still helps, doesn't she?
I don't know if she did or not.
She did help this year for some, because I, I talked to her, well Sylvia and Roy did most of it.
Yep, so we just get the stuff from Carlson's greenhouse. I just call her and tell her we're ready to do our pots and she pulls everything together and the guys go pick it up and Ryan's so good. It's pretty reasonable, I think it was a little over $200.
They really look nice.
Yeah.
What were you saying on the budget comparison? You were saying something before.
I said the sewer fund, if you look at the sewer fund, last year was $367,000 versus $214,000 because we paid off a bond, a bond dropped off, so. We left the, um, revenue side exactly as it was last year, basically, I mean, we budgeted pretty much the same because the difference we can put into the fund to grow the fund for when we do downtown 2021.
Are there other parks that we're looking at adding next year, is that why the increase in the park development went way up?
Um, no, we put some of our LGA in there for the regional park, to start getting that fund built up.
Yep.
But don't they allot so much for parks?
LGA?
Yeah.
No, you can use it however you want, it's our determination what we want to do.
I, I thought that there was so much envy that we made it for parks.
No, I mean, we're putting $75,000 in there and then we pulled it out for a year or two and, used it to pay for the trail, and then we put it back, now we put it back out there and we put $100,000 out there.
Awesome.
Thank you.
The parks utility roundup, that's the cans, or that's the water, right?
Yep, that's the, yeah, the one rounding up on the water.
Where does that go then, just in the parks general fund?
Um, isn't that in parks development also, in 235? Yeah, so 235, so that, and the cans both, the cans are under the contributions and donations, that's where the cans go and then the utility roundup goes to the, so they're both in park development also.
The volunteer expenses, was that, did that used to be for the volunteer dinner?
Yes.
Travel expenses went up too?
For, um, for council or for who?
Uh, just, it's under, page 11.
That is, that's us, that's Deb and I and, and Jess has been going now to the first.
So I'll go in second.
Okay, then we got travel expenses on page 12 also.
That's under council.
Page 12 is, um,
But nobody, nobody uses that, do they?
Travel expenses on page 12 is planning and zoning, that's in case any, all planning on zoning, want to go to any training? We budgeted for it just in case they want to go, because there's, a lot of times there's some training out there for planning and zoning.
Are they going to be doing any training Deb, I know they've talked about it a couple of different times, but.
Not right now, but we know.
Because come January is when you guys are going to look at the other codes and stuff, right?
January we start with fines.
Okay.
Anybody apply for planning and zoning yet?
Uh-uh.
I did get a parking rental.
Mm-hmm.
Got it today?
Yeah. No, so if you know of anybody.
Yeah, we're talking for a while.
Okay.
Any other questions or anything else that comes to light or?
Do we have a kennel contract with?
Uh, crossroads, that's not crossroads.
Where are they looking, are they close by?
Oh, no.
Some, oh.
Right off of 14.
14. 14 and 55.
Because he makes tidy clothes, yeah.
Do they come and pick up the dog?
No, we're going to take it.
We run them over there.
So we try to find the owner before we all.
Yeah.
Try to get somebody to put it out on Facebook.
We have daily stuff on there.
We got a, we got a kennel and we got a cage.
Or another white dog, right?
Yeah.
There's also a kennel down by the, we start by. Wire kennel or, you know.
Yeah, the smaller, we got a little Kerry cat.
Yeah. We only pay for them if they, if they actually pick them up and take them over there, so they don't charge us like an annual contract fee or anything. We're just contracted with them and then they can take them over there.
Any other questions?
I just, water meters just popped up, I don't have a question on the dollars, but do we have them all switched out yet?
One left.
Just the one.
And that guy's never, that guy's never wrong.
So they switched?
I had to write her a letter.
Okay.
Tell her we sort of wrote the things we did wrong, she might as well change it.
All right, at least you're in. All right, other guys, is it the guy on Second Street?
Yeah, he's always gone, whenever we.
I know he used to work for Lorham and I don't know if he still does, but they were gone for months at a time, a lot of times.
Yeah, at least the other ones. Did you see what changed in that, did water changes?
I haven't really.
I don't? From how?
From theirs.
Yeah, I don't know about, if she's noticed anything or not.
Okay.
Well, when it went up, they probably called.
Oh, you would have, you would have heard from them. Well, I think they were warned that it probably would be higher than their other one because they will, they will slow down as they get older because they can't go fast. So as they'll start building up inside, the crust will build up inside and they'll slow it down, so. They might have noticed a little difference. We buy them in, but then you'll also notice if you look under 601 in the revenue side, so like on page eight, you'll see where we have water meter sales. So we're spending $15,000 to buy them, but we're getting $10,000 back. So, because we charged for the new homes and stuff, paid for them, and all the second meters paid for them.
Yeah, so, part of that would be the second meters, right?
Yeah.
Oh, and the second meter, that's just water usage, no sewer.
Are these ex, these extra funds are going to collect on the water, on the water bills and electric bills, what fund is that going?
The franchise piece?
Franchise piece, right? Well, when we did that, that did, that was already part of the preliminary budget and we hadn't gotten to go through yet, so we really haven't even, they're not included in the budget as far as income, so it'll be extra income for us. Um, our thoughts were to put them in the streets department or in the general fund for now until we redo this project down here because, 2021 when we do all of downtown, the water and sewer, we're looking at about a four, $4.1 million project, and the county's only going to pay $600,000. So we're going to have a pretty good bond payment, and some of it will come from water and some from sewer, that's why if you look at the end, we talked about the rates. Um, the rest will all have to come from like the levy, which this one will be done, so we can use that levy that we've had out there for that, we'll just switch it right over to that levy. And then anything extra that we need, we can use for franchise, and if we don't need the franchise fees there, we'll use them for future street projects or in the parks. So our franchise fees are designated for streets and parks. It's just not included in this one, so it's going to be added extra, so we'll do a budget amendment when we get it, but that's because it didn't go through until after we'd already done that part of the project. Because that was a preliminary, so.
Suppose the public is all aware of what's going to happen, I wonder.
Oh, yeah, it's all over, they know. The franchise fees are, is it? I'm going to say, because we haven't heard a word here, yeah.
It's not that bad, they just talked about that there's the franchise fees that were prepared before, so.
Well, hopefully they'll, I mean, I hope it's positive enough that they'll realize that it's to fix stuff up and to use it for positive things.
Nothing negative.
Okay.
Well, that was, yeah. That was plain.
Is that who I thought it was?
Old or angry.
Yes. That was her. So it's fine.
So it says the tax rate's dropping a little over five and a half percent, right?
Yep, so I got our, um, I got our preliminary, our estimated tax capacity, which is $2,579,000, compared to $2,195 last year, so our tax rate's actually going to go down by five and a half percent. Um, so I did, just did a couple of things, like on the bottom there where it says 2019 property value and 2020 if that was the value of your property, but, you know, that year's changes every year because it goes up. So what I did was I took two properties down below, based on the value that it was in 2019 and what their value is now in 2020. So the first one went up, um, from 164.4 to 183.5, which means they might have done some improvements. So their taxes are going to go up $5.86 for the year. The second one I took, um, was last year's tax law market value was $186,000, this year it's $204,000, and theirs are going to go down to $8, so. So in all reality, there's pretty much staying level, which is good if the county's going up still on the school award, I mean, the school referendum and the county both going up, so, we'll stay pretty much flat.
And that's key to note because, um, for as long as I can remember in any city I've worked, when people always think that when their taxes go up, it's because of the city, and typically they don't go up for the city, or if they do, they go up very little, it's usually because of the school and the county, so if anybody ever approaches you with that, you want to make sure that you say, cities is staying level, it's.
Yeah, I mean, all you have to say to them, our tax rate's actually going down five and a half percent, if your house value, depending on what your value went up on your property, is going to affect what your taxes are going to be, but it should be pretty, pretty flat.
It's all broken down on the statement.
It is, yep, yeah, that's from last year to this year, yeah, yeah.
You should have to look at that one too.
Yeah, we'd have to open that up, wouldn't we?
Yeah, well, the county claims that their tax increase is okay because, it's just bringing you back to the level of taxes you were paying in 2016, so. That's what I had a commissioner telling me the other day. You're just paying what you used to, so it's okay.
So they figured that out, huh?
Yeah.
I don't recall my county taxes ever dropping. But they went from 2016 down in 2017.
It's what this commissioner member from up in the St. Michael area told me the other day.
Oh, yeah, well, we know.
Because land value goes down and the taxes go up.
No, not him.
No?
Oh.
He would be my commissioner. If he's from St. Michael, he must be my commissioner for the Rockford township.
I don't know, probably, maybe.
So then I put in there the proposed levy, which is the same as what we did back in September, or August, I didn't make any changes. So that's what, the one on page 31, that's all based off of the one on page 32. So that's what will be presented, this one still says proposed, but I haven't gotten the final of the county yet, but, at the December council meeting, this is what will be at the public hearing. Still left to have a public hearing for the taxes. I'll have to put something in the paper, I think I'll, I better do that in the morning. I think we just have to put things that says we're holding it down. I know the county puts one out, but I think we have to agree to it. So, any questions on that?
I have none.
I'm good. Okay. So we'll present that then at the council meeting. I'm probably, I'm not going to put all of this stuff, this revenue and budget, revenue and expenditure pages in there. Maybe all I'll do is put this budget comparison and the, um, levy and this, this page that's got the stuff on with the taxes, I'll put that in there. So otherwise our packet will be so thick that we won't be able to email it anywhere. Kicks back at us because it's too big.
We'll triple our budget just printing it off for everyone who shows up.
Well, and then when she tries to email, it won't go through because it's too big. So the last thing in here that we need to talk about then is, um, page 33. So back in the capital improvement plan that we did four years ago, three, four years ago, whatever it was, there was two major construction projects, the new well and wellhouse and the total reconstruction of the city's old town site, which are going to require what, funding from water and sewer. The current sewer rates, although the current sewer, water and sewer rates are not going to support the bond payments that we need at what they're at, and I know last year, we did the 25 cent a year ago already, and we were going to do another one last year and we didn't, we held off. So this year we looked at it and Wayne and Deb and I thought we'd do 20 cents in the water and sewer, just to start building it up for that, those projects. You know, it's much easier to do a small amount, you know, over a period of time than to give them, I mean, like Sean had in the capital improvement plan that by the time we did that project, we might have to raise them 90 cents, well, you don't want to do that in one year.
No, no.
And with the bond, you know, the other one paid off and with our fund starting to build up now a little bit, we'll see where we have to be, but, we thought if we did 20 cents, you know, in both of them this year, and started getting it built up to anticipate the bond payment for that project, will give us a couple of years and then next year we can look at it again and maybe go up a little bit, but you know, just do a little bit at a time, just to keep us where we need to be so that we can make these payments when we do this project.
Good planning, you want to incrementally every year go up with your water or sewer. Because like she said, you do a great big one and you have an uproar, so.
So if you're, if you think that's, I mean, if you're okay with that, we'll bring the resolutions to the December council meeting. And then there'll also be the ones for the SAC and WAC because we up those every year, those are what gets put on the building permits that the developers pay the SAC and WAC fees, and we always go up a hundred dollars with those, and then that, that's building up then the expansion funds for if we need, you know, to do some major reconstruction of some kind or, like our wastewater plant ever needs to be expanded or anything like that, or, um, the wells and wellhouse if the day comes where you have to build a water plant because, you know, we're too big now and the state says you have to have a water plant to have money built up in those funds, so. Um, we'll do the four resolutions and the two for the SAC and WAC and the two for this at the December meeting.
So how much is the SAC and WAC then?
Um,
Was about $6,500, I think.
I think water is $2,500, so it would go to 26.
SAC is 16, isn't it?
Um, it's 1,600 just for the wastewater plant and it's 37, so it's 53 and 25 right now. So that's 70, 77? So it'll go up to 79, I think, two of them. Or three of them, we don't change the wastewater plant, in order to do that, we have to meet, meet and agree with Waverly because it's in our contract. And we're taking enough with the new houses that we don't need to, I mean, there's, I think right now we're at, in the wastewater expansion, we're already at 800 and some thousand, so. We're okay there, if the day comes where we have to do anything, we'll be okay.
Any idea how many new housing permits were pulled in this year?
I think we're at about 30 or a little more, and Waverly I think is just a little bit higher than us.
Wow. How many are empty? Haven't been over them.
They still have, um...
There's a decent, there's, there's, Whitetail's got quite a bit of empty ones, yeah. Like my development, there's minimal.
I was going to say, there's probably four.
Yeah, I was going to say, single family homes, there's not a lot of yours, but the townhomes, well, what, rarely the townhomes that they started doing the patio homes, I think there's still...
Yeah, there's still, still, like Breckenridge is open there. I see they changed to a little different style one, now that kind of more matches in with the, with the ones, yeah, with the ones that they built before.
Okay.
Yeah, it looks much nicer.
Okay.
So...
And then hopefully Preserve will go through. They're still interested, so hopefully that all goes through. And then we will be done, I mean, we would be done, but we have other land that can be developed, all the stuff that's south yet can all still be developed.
And then around the, we've been doing the regional park and Forest Creek.
Yep, so...
Anything else?
I don't see anything coming live, if anything comes up between now and the council meeting, just email me or call me or anything, I'd be happy to. And I can look that up and show them. And send you an email.
Well, no, it makes sense now when you said it was all the, um, or the plants and all that kind of stuff, okay.
Yeah, I'm thinking that's what, I'm not sure, I have to go back and look, because we don't know that we had it in place back then. Because they're trying to get it put back on now.
Right, right.
Remember Dale tried to do some of it, but the way he had it ordered wasn't that, so they're going to...
Yeah, I feel like he was just charging people, I remember some of the Facebook posts, so...
But I can look it up.
So Deb, is there a reason why we're not having the city attorney at the council meetings anymore?
He just hasn't been showing up.
Was he at the hospital?
No, no, he hasn't been, he hasn't been in a couple...
I didn't even hear from him, the one prior to that, he looked at the agenda and there was nothing on there that was related to him, so then you don't want to pay him to come out here. But I never even heard from him from this last one.
All right, anything else? All right, motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? All right, motion passes for zero.